All right, good evening. I'd like to call the regular board meeting of the Waterloo Schools Community Board of Education to order and ask that you join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And will you please rise and join our East High JROTC students in leading of the pledge?
Pledgeance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I love it when we get to have our own in-house do that. Well, I'm going to go ahead and read our mission statement tonight. It's my last time, so I get to do it. So there you go.
For sure.
Don't worry, I'm not going to cry over the mission statement. All right. The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to ensure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. So the first item on our agenda tonight then is a board celebration with our East High JROTC, and they have received the Governor's Volunteer Award, which is a really big deal. And so I am going to ask our Director of School and Community Relations, is Aqui back there? Oh, there she is.
Hiding in the back.
Yes. Aqui to come forward and give us a little background on this, so we can honor these fine young people.
Happy to do that. Yeah, so Yolanda Lovelace, Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs Director, nominated East High Army JROTC for the 2021 Governor's Volunteer Award, which was subsequently awarded and presented at a virtual ceremony this past summer. The cadets contribute so much to the community through various partnerships that include the Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs Office, Northeast Iowa Food Bank, Daughters of the American Revolution, American Legion, American Red Cross, and many, many more organizations throughout the Cedar Valley. This is the second year in a row the East High Army JROTC program has been recognized throughout the state of Iowa for service to our community. During the 2019-2020 school year, the program received the Iowa Character Counts Award for Student Organization of Character. So congratulations to Lieutenant Colonel Glenn Keith and the East High JROTC program, and I'll have them come on up, along with Yolanda Lovelace.
So, good evening, Superintendent Board. My name's Yolanda Lovelace. I'm the Director of Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs, and on behalf of the Commission, we serve about 7,000 veterans in the Blackhawk County area, but don't these students look wonderful? So I'm an East High grad. I'm 1982, so I'm showing you my age. But I'm happy, we didn't have this program when I was in high school, but I'm glad it's there now, and it's because of the great things that this board is doing to implement programs like that into our schools. And she has so many ribbons, it makes me wonder, when I was in the service, did I have that many? But no. But what an honor it is to stand before you to recognize these fine students. And what I'm talking about by outreach, we go out in the community and we do certain things for our veterans, but every program that we're associated with, the JROTC is there to do the pledge of allegiance, to bring in the colors, and so they have been very, what I would like to say is, very professional, very dedicated, and very committed to helping the veteran community. And so it was an honor to stand before you today to congratulate these students, and in particular Colonel Keith, who is the leader, and I mean, he's an outstanding leader. He used to be my boss, but he, so, but no, it's a great opportunity to do that. And I just wanted to thank you for giving us two minutes of your time to celebrate these students and all of the ROTC students here at, JROTC students at East and West High.
So I wanted to do a live ceremony since we did the virtual ceremony. So, so for the Trojan Battalion, our Battalion Commander, Mara Strater, and Manny Williams, our Major Manny Williams, our S3 Officer. For the state of Iowa, the Governor's Volunteer Award for Outstanding Volunteer Service. The state of Iowa hereby acknowledges Waterloo East High Army JROTC Group Governor's Volunteer Service Award for 2021. Sign, Kim Reynolds, Governor of the great state of Iowa. Outstanding work.
Commander, would your cadets at least step forward and introduce themselves? Come on, you two, give us a little information.
My name's Mara Strater. I'm the Battalion Commander of the program, and I've been in it in four years, and I love the program. You really have an opportunity to learn so much about the community, and I've seen so many cadets grow and develop and learn so much through the program, and I really think more people should take a chance at the program. So I'm really glad we got a little bit of recognition for how much we have done for the community, and I'd like to thank you for giving us an opportunity to come here and show our award off. Thank you.
Congratulations.
My name is Emmanuel Williams. I'm the S3 of the program. This is my second year in the program. I'm a junior at East. That's about it.
What do you like most about the program?
Again, the community and volunteering a lot. I like to volunteer. I try to sign up for as many as I can.
Awesome. Well, congratulations to all of you, and thank you for taking time to come tonight. I know it's heading into finals and other stuff, so we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. Actually, I almost forgot to tell you anyway. We got a little time. We got a little time. You were fine. Get that picture. It's important.
Kingsley, you're gonna photo bomb.
You're gonna photo bomb in the back? No, we're not in any rush. Well, hang on. Do you want us to duck back here? No.
No, Lyle's not.
He's gone. He's out of town. Thank you all.
He's back tomorrow morning.
All right. The next item on our agenda then is Exhibit B, and this is another board celebration, and this is the West High Yearbook Students attending a conference. And so I will again ask Aqui to come forward, and this is the Iowa High School Press Association work, so.
Yeah, so in late October.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry, hold on just a moment. I apologize. Director Williams, go right ahead. Lieutenant, hold still.
Can you guys hold up a quick second?
I didn't realize we were, keep, get back here, please.
So normally, we have the opportunity to comment, and anybody knows me, board celebrations are by far my favorite thing to do while on the board. And just to you, Colonel Keith, and the cadets, I've had an opportunity to watch you, speak with you often, and I have a young man that is very dear to me, that I know benefits from your program. We've talked before, and you made a comment beginning of the school year, and you said you attended a young lady's kinciera, I believe, and the impact that that had on your program, just going to that event, and how many students you were able to draw into your program just by getting out into the community and involving yourself in, you know, the community work. So if I can, on behalf of the board, we'd like to thank you for your service and all you do for our young people. Keep up the great work. Your program is great, and it's growing, and we'd love to see you back here again. So, thank you again. We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. I was not trying to cut off, Esther, I didn't know you wanted to say anything. I really was not trying to cut you off.
Normally, we do say.
And for the kiddos.
Normally assume.
Anyway.
My dad was a Marine during Vietnam. He was not deployed, and then my father-in-law was in the Navy. So thank you for reaching out to the veterans in Blackhawk County. It means more to them than you will ever know.
I know. I'm losing control. All right. Thank you all very much. I really thought that, anyway, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we really do appreciate your service, and thanks for being here tonight. Thanks. And now you can go, I promise. And Aqui, my apologies for cutting you off now.
No need to apologize.
Please proceed.
These opportunities to truly be authentic and genuine in our thanks and gratitude is absolutely appropriate, so no worries at all. So yes, in late October, the West High Yearbook Students had the opportunity to attend the IHSPA, the Iowa High School Press Association Fall Conference, at the University of Iowa as part of their yearbook class, and Nicole Goodman, Yearbook Advisor, along with several students are here to share their experience and some of the takeaways they received from attending that conference, so we'll hear from them.
Hello, thank you for having us. My name is Nicole Goodman, and I am a teacher at West High. As you can see, I have one wonderful student with me. A lot of our students have other obligations and jobs, which I think honestly speaks to their dedication and how amazing they are, and so unfortunately, a lot of them were not able to come tonight, but no worries, I wrote down all of their takeaways, so I can still share on their behalf. So as she said, in late October, which feels like forever ago already, we were fortunate enough to attend the Iowa High School's Press Association's Fall Conference at the University of Iowa through our yearbook class. And so at the conference, there were over 600 students from across the state in attendance from over 30 different schools, and it was really, it offered a great opportunity, not only for myself as a new advisor to yearbook, and to our students, to not only gain new perspectives and insight from other schools, but to really learn some technical skills that we can then bring back and use to improve not only our yearbook, but our journalism program overall. So for myself, my key takeaway is that I was able to attend different sessions meant for new advisors and just advisors in general, and really start to build kind of a support network for myself when it comes to yearbook. And so I've since then zoomed with yearbook advisors from Iowa City and from Des Moines and from across the state, and really being able to connect with different people from the advisor standpoint to really kind of help me in my role and be the best yearbook advisor it can be, and help us create the best yearbook we can be. So I'm going to introduce our next, our students. We're going to hear from Ms. Wonderful Olivia to kind of talk about her takeaways from the conference.
So, the conference was a really good experience. We took many things from it to help improve like our committee and our yearbook. We learned different tips and tricks to like improve it, our yearbook, and like make people want to buy it and want to like read it and things like that. There was, like Ms. Goodman said, there was like over 600 students, and it was kind, I didn't expect that many people to be there. So it was really, really cool to see like all the people that showed up and to like learn different things that they do from their yearbooks, from their schools and everything. One thing in particular that I really enjoyed listening to was the yearbook advisor from the school where the Parkland shooting happened. She had a session, and so she talked about how to cover tragedy, and I was really inspired by that because she taught us how to incorporate it in the yearbook without it consuming the yearbook. And so it was, and just seeing, she showed us some of the pages that were in their yearbook from that year. And so, yeah, we learned from different advisors and some students who led sessions as well. And so for Ms. Goodman too, that helps her since she's a new advisor this year, and so she's doing great, and I think that our yearbook is going to be really good this year. So, thank you.
Olivia. Olivia.
We got a question.
Yeah, I was just curious. What year are you?
I am a sophomore, so I'll be graduating in 2024.
Great, great. So is this your first year in yearbook?
Yes, yes.
Okay, very good. So thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. And so any kiddos who want to do your book, they need to do journalism first, is that?
Journalism is recommended, but it is not required with our program. So overall, we'd kind of just want to come in and say, one, thank you to West High for supporting student journalists, but also thank you to you all for supporting our student journalists, not only in yearbook, but hopefully to build up into a bigger student journalism program. So just want to say thank you.
Real quick, Ms. Goodman, how many students went to the event?
How many students from?
From West High?
Yes, from West High, we had 12 of us go.
12, okay.
Yes.
And how many are in your program? I mean, work on the yearbook.
So currently, in our yearbook, this year we do have a small class. This year we do have 12 students in yearbook, and so we have quite a few students in our journalism classes, our journalism elective. We probably have this semester around 50, and then another like 30 next semester. So we have quite a few students in our journalism program, but yearbook this year is a smaller group, but they are small but mighty. They are a very ambitious and dedicated group.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
And Olivia, we really appreciate you representing for the other 11 that couldn't be here tonight, so, thank you. Olivia, what's your last name?
Whitmire.
Whitmire, okay. Thank you.
We look forward to seeing the yearbook.
Yeah.
Come out in May, right?
We turn in at the end of the school year, and then it's delivered in the fall, so we'll see it early August.
Thank you both, very much.
October, yeah. They come late. Anything else, Board? Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations, and I would ask if there's anyone here this evening that wishes to address the board? And if so, you need to please come forward, state your name and address. I have a whole little spiel, but I'm not going to read it if we don't have anybody here to, we got an audience, but.
Shanley, it's your last time, come on.
I don't know, no, no one needs to hear that. I already read the mission statement. I'm golden, so, all right. All right. Yeah, exactly. Like, I already don't know what I'm doing, so, okay, great. Then we will move on to the consent agenda, which this evening consists of three items: the minutes of the November 8, 2021 regular board meeting, personnel appointments and adjustments, which are Item D, and then bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, which is Item E. So I would ask for a motion to place those items on the table.
So moved.
Thank you. In a second. And are there any items that board members wish to have removed? All right. Wow, you guys are giving me a present tonight. So seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to Item F, which is the 2020 and 2021 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or the CAR. And I will turn this over to Michael Coughlin. I need to make sure I don't have a... I do have a, I gotta get to it. All right. The recommended motion here is that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the District Finance Committee to receive and place on file the Waterloo Community School District 2020-2021 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
So moved.
Thank you, Sue, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, India, and discussion. Michael, now I will turn it over to you. Do I need to draw it out? So we saw this last week in finance. Oh, it's the audit. Gotcha. Michael, can you turn your microphone on, please?
I had it on.
There you go. So it's the caff.
It's not one of those good nights, because I've looked at this PowerPoint a dozen times, and I come to put it on a flash drive, and I'm getting messages that I've never seen in my life before. So anyway, I'm going to try to load it on the computer there and see if I can access it, and, but if you want to go to the PowerPoint, we may have to go back to that, that's in your board agenda. There's not a lot of changes, but...
Well, as Lyle and Shanley and I reviewed the financial reports and the audit, and we asked Bergen to maybe make it a little bit better in lay terms, and I think they did an excellent job with that, to be able to, you know, like the unmodified opinion, this is the best opinion auditor can issue, you know? So we were very happy with the way the audit turned out, and the lack of findings, and the collaboration of our staff in getting information to the auditors. It was all top-notch this year and got done in a timely fashion. We used to do this a lot later, so we're getting very proficient in getting it done. And Michael's department was top-notch as usually always, so that's what I have to add.
We're trying, Michael. I might have to start dancing next.
I should have known when I came in here this afternoon, and there was, Jason was trying to review the station here, and there was two wires pulled out of the wall, so we had to get a tech, and, but we had it all working. Like Pam said, at four o'clock, it was working.
I jinxed you, Michael.
Yep.
And now I can't get the screen to even come on, so.
Well, we do have hard copies, and we do have what was in our agenda, so if you walk us through it.
Yep.
You know.
Okay, so let's look at that. I'm going to go through the presentation that you have in your board agenda.
Okay.
And then we will look at just a couple of things in the books I gave you, so I know that you've at least opened it.
Would be.
Okay, so this is an annual requirement by the state that every school district has to have an independent audit firm come in and review the books, and it is a process of about five days of in-house preliminary work before we close the year, and then after the Certified Annual Report, or the CAR, is done to the state, then they come in again for another week in-house, and then probably another two weeks just in their office dealing with this. So there is a lot of information that they process. I know the handout that they give us in the office for preparation is about 100 categories of things that they want produced, sent, looked up, reviewed, so it is a lot of work, and I think this is a really good time to mention the veteran staff that I am blessed with in the business office of Jeff Sommerfeld, who is the Business Manager and has been here for over 25 years, and he is the main contact with the auditors. He actually was an auditor before he came to the district, so it's kind of in his wheelhouse. Deb Jacobs has many exhibits to prepare as well, and then of course, we have the other people in the office that make all of those reports possible with Kristy Troop and Chris Whelan in payroll, and Jamie Michaels and Ann McCusker in the office doing a variety of things, along with accounts pay, paying the bills and keeping that all straight and working with the accounts. So as Sue mentioned, just starting out on page two, that this is an unmodified opinion. It doesn't mean that it was perfect, because we'll all go through a couple of comments that they were required to give, but it is, an unmodified opinion is the best opinion an auditor can issue. So it means that all of the reports and schedules and narrative in the financial statements are all presented fairly, that if anybody looks at it, studies it, looks at the information, it is a fair representation of the financial condition of the district. Page three. So a couple of things just to organize in your thinking, because I gave you three books. It used to all be bound in one, but Bergen is one that separates it. So the one that says government auditing standards and uniform guidance, a single audit, that is one that deals with, we have major funding, that they have to pick a couple of things. Food service has been picked in the past. Title I is picked this year. Esser was picked last year, even though we had a much bigger impact with it this year, but they didn't do that because they did it the year before. And that's the second heading there in the single audit, talking about Title I and Head Start, that they did this year, and there was no internal findings there. And then the communication letter, which is the second little book, is really a lot like the presentation that I'm giving tonight with the PowerPoint, and that's what Bergen does to present to the Finance Committee, and then goes deeper if they have questions. There is a mention of a couple of comments on the top of that page, and I will get to them a little bit later in detail. The fund types is, not only do we have to deal with the different funds, like general fund and management and student activity, and those are basically the divisions given by the state, so you can look at it as a school board, and everything's not mixed together. But what the auditors deal with is different types of funds. So the governmental funds is basically what you're used to, that I report on to you. The general fund mainly, different special revenue like Pebble and Save, and the debt service, capital projects fund, those are the governmental funds. They are supported by taxes. Then you have proprietary funds, which is the school nutrition fund and the print shop, which basically means the income they have coming in from their constituents should cover the cost of their program. It's a little bit different now, because with food service, everybody's on the CEP, so all 95% of our revenue comes from federal and state reimbursements. And then the fiduciary funds, this is where we have a trust where people have donated to have scholarships, that we keep that money and then distribute it every year, and the agency fund is really money that is not the district's, but we're keeping track of it. So when the teachers have a social committee in their building, and they just contribute so much money to that to be able to do different activities and work within their buildings, it's not really ours, but we are caring for it for a private group. So those are different kinds of funds that we deal with, and when you look through the audit, the majority of it is the governmental funds, because that's the main, 95% of all of the funding the district has falls under that.
So do like the booster club ones fall in that then too?
That's a really good question of which one that falls into. I think we have them in the Student Activity Fund, because they're so closely related to how they use their money. The Agency Fund was just a fund that we created with the auditor's recommendation just a couple of years ago, so we always just had it in the Student Activity Fund. Going to page five, the School Foundation Aid. This is the SSA or the allowable growth. It's just showing that yes, we are slowly creeping up based on what the legislature approves and what the governor signs every year. Page six, and it is kind of the basis of our budgeting process, and we'll end up going through all of that again in just a few months, of how it determines how property taxes are calculated and state aid and all of those things, and we're looking at new laws this year that the legislature did last session, so it's going to look a little different again. So page six is just a summary of our certified enrollment over the last five to six years, and I put the new count in the green there on the far right. And the one thing that's a little bit hard to keep track, and I write this on here so I can keep track of it, but when we have a count in October of '21, let's just use that, so this last count... So this last count, it doesn't go to '21, '22 because the year's already started. All of the funding's already calculated. All the property taxes are already, it's set. So the '21 count in October goes to '22, '23 for that budget. So you have to think a year and a half passed when the count is done. So when you're looking at the actual count for the certified enrollment, and that includes all of the kids that live in our district. So the easiest one to think about that's a little bit, has a little bit different effect, is open enrollment. So when we have open enrolled kids that come to Waterloo, we don't count them. We're not responsible for paying for them. Where they came from has to give us funding for that. Likewise, when it's our kids going to other districts, we count them. And we get that money because we have to pay the other districts. So it's, it seems like, we don't count the kids that are here and we do count the kids that go to other districts. So it's kind of, it seems like it's a little backwards, but you have to think about, the money is following the kids. The sources of revenue on seven, this is really breaking down the different types that we have. We have local funds, that's the bottom dark blue, and that has stayed relatively flat over the last five years. And that, a big share of that is our property tax askings have been pretty flat. They've been right around 40 million, down, dipped down to 39. And so over that, time hasn't changed. The state revenue has changed, the green, the state aid. And by formula, that should go up because the new money that we get every year, that we just looked at, the SSA or the allowable growth, whatever is new, the state pays for. We don't charge that to the local taxpayers. So the green should be going up because the state is taking on more responsibility. And then we have the glaring change in the federal, which is the Esser money. We've always been around 10 to 12 million for federal money. That's like title programs and other grants. And this is just general fund. But then when Esser money kicked in, we saw a pretty, pretty big jump of the federal that came in. On page eight, we have expenditures by the different program areas there on the left. Instruction and Student Services. The General Administration would be the superintendent and you. And the Building, School Administration is the principals. And then we have other programs within the ESC, like the Business Office and HR and Technology. And then you get into Operations and Maintenance and all of Marty's things and the overhead and the heat and lights and repairs and all that, and then the cost of transportation. So you can pick any of those areas, follow it across these five years and see where variances are. The one thing that they did comment in the communications book that has this chart in here, you see on the top line, the regular instruction from 1920 to 2021 went up $3 million. Some of it is just natural, teachers are getting raises and we're putting more money into instruction. But one of the things that bumps out a little bit in this transition between '20 and '21 is the COVID closing. Because normally, we order a lot of things at the end of the year for supplies. We didn't do that in '20. So that went lower than it normally does. And then when we came back and it kicked up into '21, that's why you see a significant change in that particular category. A lot of the other ones are not significantly different and they're basically just a progression from one year to the next. And then if you are visual on page nine is the pie chart of how the different, what we call object codes, is what is the money spent for. That follows that graph that you just looked at, or not the graph, the table on page eight. So it gives you a visual of how much of our total budget is used in all of those areas. So one of the big things that changed with the additional revenue, and then expenditures were, grew somewhat. So our federal revenue because of Esser in '21 went up over $12 million. And the expenditures stayed relatively the same in progression, about 3 million higher, a little over 3 million higher than the year before. So that's why you see the revenue over the expenditures in '21. There was a difference of a positive 10 million. And so in the bottom right corner there, we started with a fund balance. And this is not authority. This isn't the formula. This is an actual, like a business income statement of saying, these were our actual revenues. These are our actual expenditures regardless of what our authority is. This is like comparing it to just a regular business income statement. So at the end, we started with 18 million and ended with 29 million. So one of the things that will come shortly after the audit is done and we get into the new year is a review of some of those as we now plug these into the next year. And I know it, it's always been an interest of knowing, okay, what are we really spending the Esser money on? So we will get to that and report on that, so we can follow that. Because it is in effect through June of '24. We have to claim all the money by then to actually receive it. So that is our process. On 11, this is just a breakdown of that 29 million. Because some of them are, most of the money is just available to put into the budget. 26 million where it says unassigned there. But the numbers above that are special accounts that we have to spend that money in those areas. So we can't claim it as something we can use for something else. So it's just a breakdown of what our fund balance means. School Nutrition on 12 is, I'm not exactly sure how to say this gently, but it has been a puzzle to try and guess and report and follow and how many kids are going to be here. How many, how are we going to do the delivery system and what's happening with all that? And do a comparison between the total close at the end of '20 into all of the hybrid things in '21 and now into '22. How is that all working? But we have basically shown on the books that we're just breaking even. And that's about as good as we can do under these conditions. 13 is a summary of what you have seen and you will see on the Aiden Levy worksheet and the budget that you will approve in March and April. Bergen is the only auditors that we've had that has addressed the revenues. And it really is not a measure that the state requires. So for this, this year is a glaring difference of Esser money coming in after we had certified our budget. So there's no way of, and in the, there's no way of knowing that was coming or how much was coming. And on the official budget form, there's no place to change revenue expectations. We can do a budget amendment on expenditures, but there isn't something for revenues. Because the revenues kind of take care of themselves. If you don't have the money, you can't spend it. So I did want to get to the comments on 14. And we had a comment on enrollment again and we were off by two kids. So out of 10,800 kids and trying to find everybody and where they're going and what they qualify for and what category to have them in, I can't do the percentage in my head, but it's a very tiny percentage. And materially, it doesn't have any effect on the audit. But by state rules, the auditors have to put in any discrepancy, any correction on enrollment. So that's why you see it, even when it's a tiny, tiny little number out of almost 11,000 kids.
Michael, I have a quick question.
Yes.
When you were mentioning categorizing for students, they can be in different categories. On average, how many different categories can a student be placed in?
I'm just, when I say that, I'm talking about, are they regular kids? Are they tuition in or out? Are they special ed kids that may go to a consortium? Are they homeschooled? Are they, I'm trying to think of the bottom section of that. You know, are they pre-K? Are they, you know, so that's what I'm talking about, of trying to capture all of those students.
Okay, thank you.
The other finding that the auditors addressed was they, they needed to make an entry to correct a misrepresentation of our fixed assets. And when you're talking about fixed assets, the biggest thing that we have are buildings. So we have, I know this is something that we're going to address a little more here at the next Finance Committee meeting of what is the value of our fixed assets. And in the audit itself, the thick book, there is a schedule for fixed assets. But that, that schedule on page 53 has all the depreciation mixed in. So it really doesn't tell you what total value we have. It gives you the adjusted value. But we do have the total value numbers that I will share with the Finance Committee at the next time. And I left them at my desk, but we have, in the last four years, gone from about $214 million of just buildings to 230 million of just buildings. And as soon as Lowell is done, then we'll add the value of that. So you can see in four or five years, there's been a pretty consistent growth and a significant change between, by where we were at in 2018. So in that transition on the books, when Lowell was torn down, every time we add to a building, it doesn't just go on Lowell proper. It says Lowell is 1931, Lowell is 2006, Lowell is another addition somewhere else. Those are all different assets. And this is the first time it's come up in the time that I've been here and all of the building changes that we've done. When we deleted assets for Lowell when they were torn, when it was torn down, one $5 million addition was not taken off the books. So $5 million out of 300 million of assets is still a little percentage, but it's still a big enough number that they have to report it. So it was just catching it and saying, you missed that part. And it doesn't have any effect on our operations. It's just a balance sheet number that compares us to what kind of fixed asset value that we have. It's just kind of a separate schedule. So I did also note on the back here on page 15, Bergen is our current auditors and we have now completed 18, 19, 20, and 21. So we have one more year to go with them and then it will be then RFP process again. And so that's what's coming up. It's amazing how fast it goes. And we're now in December just approving or seeing this to accept it from your standpoint. And we will start, be starting on next year's audit in May. So we have about a four to five month window before we're doing audit stuff again, so. One thing that I did want to show you, because there were a couple of comments, is if you take the little book that says the single audit on it. And the one thing that I like to do is, it is so easy to look at a couple of things that they thought were wrong. And they were legitimate. They had to do the enrollment number of two kids and we had missed disposing of one of the additions to Lowell. But when you look at page eight and nine in that book, actually through 10, these are many other areas that they test. Everything from the fed, from the federal awards. So measuring our, our certified budget, did it need to be amended? Was there any questionable expenditures? And I'm reading off of page 10. Travel expense, did that all make sense? It wasn't for spouses or officials that shouldn't have had that. So there's, there's quite a list, even down at the bottom of the page, the Board Minutes, that everything Pam is recording of your business agrees with the operations of how we record it. So it's very important because if she doesn't write it down, it didn't happen. So it's very important when they look at that, they look at contracts and say, does that agree with the raises that were given? There's always a group of administrators and supplement of a lot of other positions that they check contracts to make sure they are in line with what's been happening. So they do cover a lot of things. And when you look at this, none of them were out of compliance. And to me, that says way more than saying, you missed two kids. And we have to report that. But when they go into the operations of the district and how we approve purchase orders and who has the authority to do this and how we do everything in order, that is, in my mind, the test of are we doing things well? So those things came through fine. And on page 12, this is also another requirement that they have. They have to summarize the save account. Because it's kind of special money. It's not property tax. It's sales tax. And it's pretty big dollars. So that is a requirement of the legislature in the audits for every school district to review this so the board can look at it and say, okay, I can see where our balance is. I'm not going to go into the major audit in any kind of detail. There are, there is a lot of information in there. And if you have anything, whether you find it, just think of it or you see something in here and you have no idea what it is, we'd be happy to address that and get back to you so we can answer any questions that you might have. I did want to just mark out one page that is kind of an interesting comparison. And it's on, it's in the back supplemental section that the purpose of it is to look at a 10-year history. Going 10 years back, that you can look at different schedules and see, well, what has happened in the last 10 years? And one of the things that I know quite a few of you look at, and it's an interesting comparison. and it's an interesting comparison, is on page 110 and 111, the pages are sideways, and it's all the tax rates. It's all Waterloo tax rates. But it includes where you live. So if you are going to Waterloo School and you live in Evansdale, you pay a different tax rate because you have a different municipal charge. The cost for Evansdale City Government is way different than Waterloo's city government. So you can tell by, I mean, you can be sympathetic, basically, or look up what, somebody may have a question, why is my tax rate so high? Because I know somebody in Evansdale that pays a lot less than me. So this just gives you an idea of how many, you know, when you look at Raymond and Gilbertville and Evansdale, Elkhorn Heights, Cedar Falls and Waterloo, these are all Waterloo families living in different parts of the Cedar Valley. So it is an interesting comparison to see how it affects different people. So I will end with that and leave the invitation open of anything you find in there. Or you didn't look, but you still want to know. Something is a question, please forward that to me and we can address it. Is there any particular questions?
Well, I just think it's telling to let our public know that Essor dollars, you know, they're earmarked for certain things. There's stipulations only that they can be used by. So it isn't like we came into all this money and it's going to last a long time and we can use it on whatever we want. So I just think that that's imperative to know that we have the money, but it's earmarked, it will be earmarked, and it has a final date of 24, so.
It has to follow the federal design.
Yeah.
I would say, two kids with the changes in open enrollment we've had and with COVID is not a bad. But we've got a lot of movement, especially in the fall, that shifted stuff around, so I imagine keeping count has been a challenge. So I don't think that's too bad. On the asset part of it, makes me think a little bit ahead on the central remodel, anything there that might, could get missed. If we had, there was some addition or something that we did there is that may go away a part of the remodel or the addition, so.
Yeah, if we're sitting at about 230 million now, we've got all of Lowell to add and all of WCC and Central to add to that in the next. It'll take two to three years for all of that to actually hit the books. It's not just substantial completion. It's full occupancy and the punch list is done.
Right. Not thinking about anything that was added to Central that was maybe on the books that we might be missing or that we might be taking out as part of the remodel, so.
And just a question I had, as far as, let's say, the Sloan-Wallace. That, obviously, in the state that that was in, probably was more of a liability than an asset to the district.
Well, it would have been already depreciated totally off the books.
Totally off, so, yeah, thank you.
Anything further for Michael?
Just a, thank you, Michael, and congratulations, this is awesome.
And we made sure that we told the auditors that and also his staff that when we met, so, for sure. All right, then, all those in favor of approving the comprehensive annual financial report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to Exhibit G. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education approve the Treasurers' report for June 30th of 2021. Thank you, Sue and India, I mean, sorry, Sue and Aster, sorry. All right, and discussion? Michael, do you have anything that you want to add on this final?
Well, just so you understand, the motion said the Treasurers' report. So there is two of them that I normally put on this. The balance sheet of all of the different funds. And then, and that's on 42. And then on 43 is the actual cash in all of these funds.
Any questions, anybody? You want to take a minute? I'm looking at India.
Sorry, no, I'm good.
Aster, are you good?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Then all those in favor of approving the Treasurers' reports, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to Exhibit H. And this is the abstract of votes from the school election. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education take official notice of the abstract of votes from the school election held November 2nd of 2021.
Salute.
Thank you, Jessie.
Second.
There we go, India, yes, and a second by India, excellent. And discussion, so this comes from, I can let you talk, Pam, about this, that this comes from the county supervisors.
Correct, this comes from the Elections Office. And just as an official declaration that, you know, everything was legit in the election on November 2nd. So duly elected as District 1 Director is Aster Williams. District 4 Director is India Johnson. And then our at-large would be Ms. Janelle Ewing, who is a, will be a new board member taking the oath of office tonight. So this is just, like I say, it's just the official paperwork. I do have your certificates that I will give you after the board meeting tonight, so. Yes, so congratulations to the three of you.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, well then, all those in favor of approving the official notice of the abstract of votes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Okay, so now we have to take a little recess?
Take a little recess.
Okay, so do I just say that?
We just do a little recess?
So, no, we, actually, I think what it would be fun to do is just to, we have a little plaque for Shanley, but I know we had the opportunity as a group to do a little celebration for Shanley a little bit last week. And so it was fun for us to get to say a few comments about Shanley. And it was just really, I think touching is probably the best word. It was just super touching to just have a conversation about what Shanley has offered to our board over the years. She's been with us a long time. Shanley, how many years have you been sitting on this board?
13.
13 years. And during that time, you know, it has been, it's fun to see, Shanley had talked about how she has really grown as a person, as a leader, as a community member. But it was even more fun for the rest of us to talk about how Shanley has really shaped who we are. So I don't know if anybody else has anything they want to say before we, we're going to make it really, you know, we're going to do lighthearted. We already had our tears. And really, Shanley, tears are just such a great sign of, you know, friendship and admiration for the job that you have done. So I'll just open it up before we do our little presentation and switching. Anybody else? Any non-tearful words, please?
Well, I just have served 12 of the 13 years with Shanley, so. We have been like Batman and Robin, so.
Yes.
Yes, but you just have brought such wisdom and class to the board and knowledge and community involvement, which is, to me, like hugely, hugely critical. And I just appreciate your footprint in the community, of the community, and on the community. So thank you, Shanley.
Thank you, Sue.
I wanted to say that I probably would not have run for board if I had not met Shanley and Jessie and getting to know you. I hadn't met anybody else before that. But Shanley, getting to know you and seeing what you do and that it, that you could do it and still be a mom and still do all the other things, and it was okay. You just made it so welcoming to be on the board. And so thank you.
No, we're not going to fight. Thank you, thank you for everything. The support, the leadership. I think Sue just said it, the gracefulness, the, you know, the elegance you. There's going to be some hard shoes to follow, that seat. It's, you know, you, you put the board in a good light. You did, so job well done, thank you.
Thank you.
I will say that for myself, it was the perfect time to be on this board. And I am grateful to be in this position, to be able to be under your leadership. So thank you so much for that. You're welcome.
I just appreciate the time we had on together. I'm a few terms here, and you know, just your willingness to just chat on something. If like, run something by you, you're always, say, answer the phone or I'll get back to you as soon as I can. And you know, just willingness to be there to kind of work through items or questions or just, you know, give some good positive feedback, so. Really appreciate it.
I do have something to say, but we'll see if I can get through it. I wrote it down because I'm generally a little bit more off the cuff, but I thought if I read it, then I would stay on script. I wouldn't get off in the weeds, and I'd be able to get through it. So humor me with this. So yes, it has been 13 years. Interestingly enough, I started with kind of just a random little thing I read in the paper. Judy Fossil passed away. And she had been my, a beloved teacher of mine at Grant back in the day. And so, and then had been a principal at Orange and then was a school board member. And when she passed away, there was a vacancy on the board. I had to actually come twice. I'm sure you're shocked that the first time Lyle didn't really know if he was going to vote for me or not. I had to come, seriously, he's not here, so he can't defend himself. So I had to come back and present myself again. But anyway, after 13 years, yeah, it was kind of a cool thing to fill her seat. And I never thought I would still be in this seat because I do have a ton of awesome memories. I've had time to graduate three kids. I've had time to work with two superintendents and over a dozen school board members. I've had time to remodel, I counted, Michael, in the car, or in the café, 13 schools, build or remodel 13 schools. Lowell's going to be 13, so see, it's a lucky number for me. I've attended more than 275 board meetings and 300 committee meetings. I've attended 11, I've had time to attend 11 IASB conventions. And I've had time to visit the Capitol and advocate for public education on multiple occasions. I've had time to thank, or thank and shake thousands of Waterloo Schools graduates' hands at graduation. Best time ever. I've had time to make many friends and possibly some enemies. Not going to lie about that. I've had time to work on behalf of all students in Waterloo. That's been a huge thing for me. Our kids deserve to have the best educational opportunities, and I care about all of them, not just my babies or all of our babies up here, but all of them. It's time to be grateful and for the honor of serving Waterloo and all of our wonderful people here. I've met hundreds of amazing and dedicated teachers and staff and administrators. And finally, I don't like to say goodbye, so I'm just going to say, until we meet again, and I will forever be Waterloo proud. Forever, thank you. Standing, I'm actually, I'm actually just going to lean in here a little bit. So what we have for Shanley is just something to remember her 13 years. Yeah, we can sit down if you want, then we can, then I can, yeah, I can. No, she can sit, that's okay. So we want to present her with the plaque. And I'm just going to read it because I'll, we're going to actually, in just a minute, as we get ready to recess, we're actually, as a board, going to walk in front here. And then we'll have Aqui come up and get our picture so we can do that in front of here. But, so it says, this is an award of excellence, which is so fitting, "To honor your service to education by word and deed, your presence has enriched the lives of students and served as an example for all. Shanley McNally, Waterloo Schools, Board of Education, 2008 to 2021." And so I'll just hold it up and we'll get pictures in just a minute. But I just want to end with, as I was listening to the comments, as I was listening to all that you've done, I just wrote, I just jotted down seven words. I believe there are seven here, but I, and they're not in any particular order. They're just as I scribbled them, I just, poise, commitment, loyalty, leadership, diligence, grace, and service. That's you, Shanley, that's you. So we're going to take a picture and we're going to give some hugs. And then we are going to welcome our new board member and we're going to let Shanley. Go sit in there, out there and be a. Yes, be a spectator. So let's all join down here, please. I'll sit there for a minute. Yeah, we'll just get the picture.
Okay, so we are back in order at this time. Since we're absent our president right now, I will take and lead the meeting for a little bit. The first thing that we will do for our organizational reorganization is the installation of new directors. So I would ask India and Aster and Janelle to just go ahead and stand where you are. And I will read, yep, I will read the, read the oath and then you will just respond by saying aye, do. Okay, so let me get to the right page here. Okay, you'll raise your right hands, please. Do you solemnly, excuse me, just a moment. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Director in the Waterloo Community School District as now or hereafter required by law?
Aye.
Thank you, congratulations. You are duly seated board members. We can switch in just a minute. Okay, so the next order of business then is the installation of new directors. So we will need to nominate and elect a new president and a new vice president of the board. They will both serve for one year, a one-year term. So the first item is I will take nominations for the president of the board.
I nominate Sue Flynn.
Thank you.
Aye, second.
Okay, and so then I will need a motion to close nominations.
Salute. Second.
All those in favor of... All those in favor of closing the nominations? Please signify.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Okay. Sue Flynn has been nominated as president of the Board of Election. All those in favor, and this requires a roll call vote, please signify by saying aye. India?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
Aster?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Janelle?
Aye.
Thank you. Sue Flynn has been elected president of the Board of Education. Okay, the second order then is to take nominations for vice president of the board. And I will open nominations for that.
I nominate India Johnson for vice president of the board.
I second that.
Thank you. And I will take a motion to close nominations.
Salute. Second.
All those in favor of closing nominations for the Office of Vice President, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Nominations are closed. India Johnson has been elected, or excuse me, has been nominated as vice president of the board. Again, this will require a roll call vote. We'll start at this end this time. Janelle?
I approve.
Thank you. Stacy?
Aye.
Aster?
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
And India?
Aye.
Thank you. India Johnson has been elected vice president of the board. And now, I will have you to say, we will do the oath of office. If you will both stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa? And that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of President and Vice President of the Board of Education in the Waterloo Community School District as now or hereafter required by law?
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so... You may switch seats. And Janelle, if you want to, you can move this one. 'Cause the computer is on.
I can hear what you say.
Oh, my goodness. Did it on this side, Jesse?
No, I can't hear on this here.
Oh, you can't?
No.
Thank you. She has it up, so you can just scroll down. Okay. It was nice that you bought it for a minute. Okay, so the next item of business is the reorganization of the board. And at this point, then, the president can take over. So, Sue, go ahead with that motion.
Okay. We are recommend, the recommended motion is that the president of the Board of Education of the Waterloo Community School District, Sue Flynn, be authorized to sign all warrants, contracts, and all other documents that require her signature. And that the vice president of the Board of Education of the Waterloo Community School District, India Johnson, be authorized to sign all warrants, contracts, and all other documents that require her signature in the absence of the president. And the signature plate of Shanley McNally, immediate past president of the Board of Education, be authorized to continue as a validated checked signature until a plate for the new president can be obtained. And the superintendent be authorized to invest school district monies prior to allocating these funds toward payment of expenditures in accordance with Board Policy 701.8. And the Board of Education reaffirms all policies and actions of preceding boards. Can I have a...
Salute.
Sorry.
In a second.
Second.
Thank you, India and Jesse. All in favor, please vote.
Say aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, chair votes aye. Motion passed.
I'm new at this, so very new. After that, we are all new, now reorganized as a board. So, I know we all feel we're reorganized. Then, we will move on to item M on page 61 of the agenda. And this is the East High School Boys Basketball Team travel to Missouri. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve travel for the East High Boys Basketball Team to compete in the 12 Courts of Christmas Tournament and visit the Negro League's Baseball Museum in Kansas City, Missouri from December 22nd through December 23rd, 2021.
Salute. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Nope.
Not yet. Discussion first, sorry. Discussion. And we have Tim Moses here from East High. And Brent Carmichael, the head basketball coach at East High. So, you will be able to give us all the info we want to know. Thank you both for coming.
Good evening. My name is Tim Moses. I'm the athletic director at East High. And that Coach Carmichael here, the head basketball coach of East High. Last week, Coach Carmichael got an offer.
Got an opportunity and an offer to speak or to play in this 12 Courts of, 12 Courts Holiday Tournament. So, I'll let Coach Carmichael tell you more about it. I'm extremely excited 'cause this gives our kids an opportunity, for one, to play a game of basketball. But the other part of that is the educational piece by touring and getting a chance, getting a chance to visit the Negro League Baseball Museum in Kansas City, Missouri.
Good evening. Brent Carmichael, the basketball coach. One of the things that I wanted to express first was the lateness in us getting this call. We only had 21, or 20 games on our schedule and we needed a 21st game. One of the teams that was scheduled to play in the tournament dropped out. And so, they called us and asked us. So, that's why you're getting this so late. So, we do appreciate you looking and approving us for us to go. This is gonna be a great opportunity for our guys. There's gonna be over 100 teams during this two-week tournament. Some teams are playing different, they're playing on different nights. Some teams are playing two games. We are gonna play one game against William Crisman out of Independence, Missouri. So, this'll give us a chance again to play against a team that we would never have a chance to play against. The other thing is, of course, visiting the Negro League Baseball. That's historic. One of the things that I wanna do with our guys is have them select one individual to look up when they get there. So that they can find out, you know, some of the things about these historic people. But also, the obstacles that they faced in order to participate in a sport that they love so much. And so, this will give them an opportunity, again, to see what the love for sport can do for you.
Well, it sounds, really, a 12 Courts of Christmas, what a name. I mean, that's pretty cool. But do you have any tape on this team from Independence, Missouri?
Well, we have some other games first. So, I'm looking at those tapes first. I don't wanna get ahead of myself.
Okay.
But yes, I mean, I've looked them up and just, you know, kinda observed them. They're a team that's pretty tough. They're playing the 4A division in Missouri. So, they're gonna be a tough opponent for us. But again, I think that would give us a good team to play against competition-wise prior to us going for Christmas break. So, I really thank you guys for at least considering and approving us to go to this, on this trip.
I think it's a good opportunity to get our kids exposure, some of these places they may haven't been. You know, Kansas City is probably, few of them probably never been there. And, you know, with these special terms like kids, you know, kids get more exposure than they may do, you know, just in the local, you know, game here. So, that's a good opportunity. I kinda, it's always something with state rules that always bother me that, you know, we don't allow our teams to travel more than they do. I mean, it's, you know, you hear about teams in other states that go to baseball tournaments on spring break in Florida. You know, our kids don't have that opportunity here because of our state rules. So, I'm a big advocate for our state to look at ways to open up some of those rules.
One of the things that I'm excited about also is playing in the Hy-Vee Arena in Kansas City. That's historic. It used to be Kemper Arena, actually, where the NBA used to play. And so, some of us past 30 may know that facility. And so, I think that, you know, our guys, again, will enjoy, you know, being able to play in such a historic place as well.
Good. Glad you're getting this opportunity.
With this quick turnaround, will you guys have enough volunteers to be able to chaperone?
Yes, actually, we're taking nine players and two coaches. So, yeah, so we'll still, we'll be able to have that. We're gonna spend the night, we're gonna go down on the 22nd, stop a couple places, get something to eat. We don't play till four o'clock, so we'll have some time to rest a little bit prior to us playing. Go do some team building on, of course, at an all-you-can-eat place.
Barbecue, right?
Yeah. Kansas City barbecue, yes. And then, get up in the morning, have some breakfast, visit the Negro League Museum, and then come on back home. So, we can enjoy Christmas.
Are there, are there any restrictions on the amount of players you can bring?
No, actually, some of our, some of our players are already starting their vacations. And so, they weren't able to rearrange their schedule for them to go. That's why we're only taking nine players.
Make sure to get some pictures so we can see.
Yes, and again, thank you so much for letting us go on this trip.
Well, it sounds like an awesome, you know, athletic, but also educational experience for each of the kids. And there's a lot of lights down in that area too, at this time of year too, for Christmas lights.
Okay.
It kinda neat. Okay.
Is two rooms gonna be enough for all the kids?
We'll have three.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it'll be two for the kids and then one for the coaches.
Okay. I saw they like, they waived the fee for the event and stuff too. That's very cool.
Yes.
So, I wanted to thank you for doing this, for these boys. What an amazing Christmas, early Christmas gift to get, you know, to have a trip like this. Like, when I was in school, this is something I would've never dreamt of being able to do. So, thank you for making this happen. And if maybe you could convince a couple of them to come back and see us when you guys get back and tell us what they learned at the museum and how the game went.
Definitely.
Good, bad, ugly, we don't care, so.
Yes, we can do that. We want to make sure we expose them to as much positives as we can. So, I think this will, again, give them an opportunity to understand where our program is going.
Thank you.
And Dr. Linderman said send some pictures. That would be awesome.
Okay. We can do that as well.
Okay, any more questions? All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming and good luck. Okay, all members in, yeah, all members in favor of approving this trip? Please vote aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried six to zero. Very much. Now, we will move on. I see Mr. Jeff Frost in the back. So, I would ask him to come up. He's patiently waited. And this is that the grant from the Governor's STEM Advisory Council. And this is all the grant information. And he will be very knowledgeable on this. So, I'm going to go to the superintendent's recommendation that the Board of Education accepts with gratitude the Work-Based Learning Mini Grant for $5,500 and the STEM Best Achievement Grant for $10,000 from the Governor's STEM Advisory Council as outlined.
Salute.
Second. Thank you, India and Jesse. And Jeff, thank you.
My, hello everyone and welcome aboard, Janelle. Congratulations to all on your new positions here. I'm here to seek approval on two grants that we have received, pending approval by the board here. One is for $5,500 for a STEM, the Governor's STEM Advisory Council's Work-Based Learning Mini Grant. And then, the second one is the Governor's STEM Advisory Council's STEM Best Enhancement Grant. Just a real quick summary on each of them. The Work-Based Learning Grant, we were one of nine schools selected from across the state for this grant. And basically what it is, is a grant for us to put together a master plan on work-based learning. Of course, work-based learning is really a catchphrase or a catch term here across the state and a big part of the governor's mission and vision for really kind of an extension of school opportunity for our students here. So, what they want basically is us to be as creative as we can be, to really put together a model that fits best for us. And then, come August, what's gonna happen is all nine schools that have received this grant are going to have theirs posted for the entire state to see. We know there's gonna be nine variations and nine differences. Some of the schools that got them were rural, some were very large urban, some were Western Iowa, some were just a great mixture there. So, it's gonna be interesting to see the concepts and the partnering that takes place within these grants. So, that is the first one and we're excited about that. We actually have a pretty good foundation of where we think we wanna go with this. And we'll continue to get input from our business partners and from other people in the community here. But again, it's just, it's a grant that's gonna help us kind of put these pieces together for that. The second one is a $10,000 enhancement grant, which basically is an extension of about two years ago. I believe in 2019, we received the STEM Best Grant for $25,000. And that grant basically helped us set up our biomedical lab laboratory along with our anatomy and physiology lab. And at this point, two years later, there's still some of the equipment out there that Hawkeye has suggested that we could get to kind of enhance our lab to a further degree. And what this grant has done is it allows us to kind of get those last pieces and really the next iteration of equipment that's needed to really take these programs to the next level there. So, we already have kind of earmarked the equipment that we need ordered and the equipment that we're going to, if this grant is accepted, take and order and get into our labs as early as the second semester here. So, that in summary is the two grants that I applied for and we actually received and just seeking approval for them.
Did the mini grant, did every district, nine of them, get the same amount?
Yes, all of us received $5,500.
Okay, cool.
And are they going to choose one of the project as the star project? Or you're just gonna showcase all nine?
No, they didn't want us to stand out anymore than we do. So, they, so we're just gonna balance it and put all nine out there at the same time.
Okay.
That's probably on public record. I probably shouldn't have said, the other eight schools will be calling me up tomorrow.
I love looking down the items that are gonna be purchased with the $10,000. So, this is, this is like real-life stuff.
It is.
It's the real deal, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, a big part of the experience of what they're doing in these laboratory-based classes is actually, you know, using high-level equipment that they would use in the field. And so, we have a great setup already. I mean, there's no fans or buts about it that the initial grant, which was a matching grant, actually. So, Unity Point was our partner on that one two years ago. And they matched the $25,000 that the state gave us, $50,000. Bought us some really great equipment. But this extension grant is really going to help us kind of get that next and latest iteration of the equipment that we really need to kind of complete the lab.
It's nice for the kids, maybe get a chance to go in those fields to get their hands on equipment early before they're in college so that when they're, they can focus on the learning and not necessarily learning how to operate things, you know?
I would agree 100%. Jesse?
I like the K-12 stuff there too, another grant too. I think that's gonna be, you see, you know, we're doing a lot of work here, so.
Any other comments? Questions for Jeff?
Good job.
Yeah, thanks for applying.
And I have to tell you, Jeff, I had a community member that I spoke to the other day that was in the Career Center for the first time. And they just were in awe. They said, I did not know that existed in Waterloo. So, you know, they hadn't been in it, you know, they heard about it, but they hadn't. So, good job and led a great tour. And I think the more we can showcase that and get people in that building, I think it's a, it's a point of pride for sure. So, thank you. Okay, well, if, all in favor of accepting the superintendent's recommendation to accept the grants? Please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Chair votes aye, carried six to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Now, we will move on to item O on page 77. And this is Board Policy Changes. This is just the first reading and it's for information only. No action should be voted on this evening. And Aqui will be joining us just to explain these policy changes and the first reading.
All right, so as you say, it's the first reading and we'll just go through these together. All right, so as you say, it's the first reading, and um we'll just go through these together. The one oh nine, complaints by citizens, and and I'll just, I think, offer sort of a brief overview of um the changes that are proposed, and you've had an opportunity to look this over a little bit. But um complaints by citizens, the primary change there um really addresses resolving issues with those closest to to the concern. Um, so you'll see that proposed change there in red on page seventy-eight.
Is that gonna be like hard and fast? Maybe there's always gonna have to be a caveat where there's going to be times where there may not be the ability to to put the person directly with closest to the person they have the complaint with. Do you know what I'm saying?
Sure, and I think in that situation, we're talking about this being an opportunity to really ensure that the first point of contact is as close to the situation as possible, recognizing that that may be one or two or three people removed, but certainly as close to that initial or as close to that point of contact as possible.
I just don't want people to be discouraged from contacting the board. I mean, I I completely agree with the the policy. I'm just saying, I don't want people to disa-
It's mostly um kind of starting out that point of contact, so you should, that chain of command.
Right.
So starting at the lowest, it doesn't say that you cannot ever address the board, but it's, we really need things to be solved at their lowest level before they go up the chain. Well, and I guess I think it would be introducing more of a protocol that we we need to follow because I and I don't think at any point this says not to contact a board member, I I don't think. But I think that is just saying that we do have a chain of command. That would be my intake.
Yeah, they they, I I guess, just if I could say one thing on that, you know, community members can always contact a board member. Um, typically, when they're asking a question about a building or a principal or a teacher or something like that, the board members are going to say to them, have you contacted the the principal? Have you contacted the teacher? Because really, that's where the question could be um best answered. So this is really intended to save our community members some some time and some runaround um because you're not gonna be able to answer all of those. And so it it's really just getting in print what is best practice. Does that mean that there's any penalty for calling a board a board member? Absolutely not, but it's just really setting process and procedure, and that's that's expected. So if that helps a little bit, it's it's just because a lot of times if they call you and ask a question and they haven't talked with the principal, that's where you're gonna you're gonna turn them back to.
Right.
Um, and so that's just, it's just, it's just setting, establishing the expectation, not the, you know, the hard and fast rule, okay?
Um, so I know this like bounced back, and I apologize, I was not able to make the policy review um meeting. So we'll look at this again, though, correct at the
Well, this-
I mean, can we look at, can, I'm just thinking that I I would like to think about at the end of the sentence where it says resolved, adding comma whenever possible. I'm just
This is actually the first reading, so it's gone to like, this is what, it's gone through the policy.
I know, and I was not able to make that meeting is what I'm saying, and so
So are you asking her that you wanna pull this from?
I'm asking if if we can look at it again, yes.
So really, what the the process would be, that you're making recommendations, and Aqui is recording those, and so she can she can look at the team, and they will bring that back when it comes back for a second reading. Sometimes there is a minor change to the policies, and so I think she's got recorded what your what your recommendation is, so.
I do now.
And I'll be at the
Thank you, Aqui.
The next meeting as well.
Yes, thank you. And it and it really, and I should and I should have led with that. It has been um incredibly valuable to to really meet with the policy um committee um and and dig through the the nuts and bolts and the nitty-gritty of the of the verbiage, of the language, of the rationale. I've really appreciated that opportunity to have those conversations with the committee and recognizing that not everyone can make those meetings all the time, but it's been incredibly valuable. So I've made a note of that of that um suggestion, and um we'll take any others regarding the one oh nine. Are there any other questions regarding one oh nine?
I'll I'll email it to you as well, just so, and and like I said, I'll be at the meeting the next, the next one.
Wonderful. Um, and then moving to two hundred point three, you'll see that there um the primary change regarding the board being entrusted with public funds is is really the the primary change in red there, um including overseeing the improvement of student outcomes and student academic achievement and skill proficiency. Any questions or comments on that one? All right. And then two oh six, board officers, um just as, maybe this is uh funny that it happened tonight, but um just in the context of electing vice president and president, um there's some processes and timing in place there in the red. Are there any questions or?
This is just kind of housekeeping stuff is, you know, over the past two years with the committee, we've been trying to um to decide if we're what we're gonna capitalize and what we're not. And so um we had decided, I think, India and Aster decide board was always gonna be capitalized when it's the, like, talking about the board or the president or the superintendent. Um, so, and like the vice president of the board, um so when it's talking about like this board, not a board. So there's just um, you can kind of see in the old one how how it was done, just so that we have um consistency all the way through.
Sure, so that just alignment in terms of capitalization of board, president, vice president, when they're um being used as proper nouns.
Yes, yep, and and board, yeah.
Yep, awesome. I'll make a note of that.
I think Sandy um kind of has an idea of which ones they are.
Sure, and and that makes sense to me. I think that um we've, that's come up in conversation, just trying to think back to other policies and remaining in alignment with how we've done that in the past, so this one may have slipped um for us, so I'll make a note of that. And then two eleven, public participation in meetings of the Board of Education, um again, that has just been, I think this is the one that talked about um public comment, yeah, the board being able to um have some discretion regarding limited amount of time. And again, that's not to say that um we would limit it in an irrational or irresponsible way, but there are times when um it may be necessary, as we often do, to give people a limited amount of time and numbers of minutes, two or three minutes.
My concern with this is the is the word must. Um, I think that there are situations where they may not be able to notify Pam ahead of time that we need to say possibly it whenever possible or something like that. The word must is, it's too hard and fast.
Is that in the, are you looking at that first line in red?
Because I don't think that's how we roll.
Is that currently what our process is?
No, they do not have, I mean, we strongly encourage.
Okay.
But yeah, no, they don't have to, so. Just I I think during the COVID time
Right.
We did require it because it was online, it was virtual, so that may be.
And just recognizing that, I think in general, not to say that that would be true of this particular po- policy, but this makes me consider it being being mentioned. In general, um recognizing that current practice and ideal practice or current practice and ideal state moving forward may not necessarily be the same. So even if this
My ideal is not must.
Sure, sure thing. So
Just a quick point, just a quick point of clarification, 'cause I'm, 'cause I know that the, and I haven't been at a couple of committee meetings, so I apologize. But I'm just worried about if we're making substantive changes to the committee's recommendations, you know, should we be doing that on the floor?
No, no, because that invalidates the opinion that was brought to us.
It's suggestions, so we can take it back to the board when we do, so.
I I guess I was confused because we were going through it and being asked to get our
I think it was a, it was a, because I think there's a, I think um because of the change of the guard, we just haven't been able to discuss kind of how we've gone through this process in the past. And so um I think what Aqui was just trying to present was, and Aqui, you can speak for yourself, I apologize, but um just kind of pro forma, here's the information that the committee suggested, not necessarily going through it again and saying, hey, there's changes to be made. If that's the case, I think we need to bring it back before the committee.
So as as being on the committee myself, I can I can ask that this be brought up then at the next policy review meeting, correct? Before the second reading.
Sure, and I I am sort of curious as to what this particular presentation of the policies after they've just been discussed in great detail with the committee, what this particular component of the process is is meant to establish. Because as Kingsley Kingsley is saying, um some of this language is easily addressed in the policy review committee meetings. And so I I'm not quite sure if this is an additional exchange that
So was Aster or Stacy or India at the board meeting when you discussed this?
We were not.
No.
None of you were there?
No.
So.
So maybe maybe to, just in the interest of time and the process piece, maybe we should just poll these items and then
That would be my recommendation, that all of them get polled and go back to policy review committee.
That had actually been what I was gonna suggest, but I didn't know if that was possible.
But really, we don't wanna do that every time, because really, the committee looks at them, and now this next time, they will be bringing an entire new batch of policies, so we're gonna double the work. So I think that's okay possibly this time, but I don't think that needs to be our standard. It definitely should not be our standard, or we will never move forward with policies because there's another batch of twenty to thirty policies coming forward for this next month, so we could end up with fifty, sixty policies.
Or if there are just certain ones that that have, I mean, I think, quite honestly, you know, if it's just a capitalization here or there, that can move forward. But if there's gonna be substantive changes, that maybe those that have more significant change just get polled. Um, so as you guys look through it, my, I guess my suggestion would be that if there are ones that you think that there are more significant changes, address those. But if there's ones that's just a a capitalization here or there, whatever, um those could move forward for a second reading at the next meeting.
Then my my question is the same as Aqui's, then what is the point of the first reading then?
It's just to To present it to the rest of the board. Public and the rest of the board. Right, 'cause only the only the three that are on policy review have reviewed those, so it's presenting it to the rest of the board.
But what if the rest of the board has disagrees with something?
That should have probably been discussed in the policy meeting, and to my point
But they're not on the committee.
So really, what what this part is, so it's it's been through the three board members who sit on policy review. And so, and at this time, I understand there was a a conflict of schedule and and you weren't
I can explain in more detail later what that was about, yeah.
Well, so, yeah, no, it's okay. No, no, that's fine. So really, all we're doing right now is just telling, signaling to Aqui which ones you feel are ready to go forward to a second reading. And if you feel that they're not ready to go forward, then this probably is not the format to redo that.
That's perfect, yep.
So really, what what I'm hearing Aqui is one oh nine needs to go back, and one and one eleven. And so tho- those are the two right now. I didn't hear anything substantive on on
Two eleven.
Two hundred or two sixteen, so, or two oh six, sorry. So I guess I would ask that you would look at all the ones that are in the five hundred and seven hundred series right now and just indicate to Indy, uh to um Aqui, not India, you don't wanna do that, do you? Um, indicate to to Aqui right now if there are others that you are wanting to return to policy review. This is not the format to discuss them, but it is the format to tell Aqui if you if she needs to take them back. So I hear two so far that need to go back. I hear two that can go forward. Can you just, is, does anybody else have any suggestions for five hundred or seven hundred, the the ones that are left? I count one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Did I count right?
So are you saying not go over the rest of them?
Six, seven. Usually, this is not where we go over them, but you can take a look at them. She can go one by one and just ta- take a look at five oh four. Does anybody have an issue with five oh four? And then
And I guess I would say just being new to this position, though, if if you didn't make the meeting and we got our board agendas last Thursday, if you had questions, it probably would have been relevant to contact Aqui prior to this meeting. You know, serving as a member on that committee
That's valid.
That you need to contact Aqui before in a public forum, we're going
Having the chance to speak about that privately, Sue.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So let's go ahead and go forward then. Do you wanna just go with the the rest of them? This time, let's just go one by one and go forward. Five oh four.
I'm I'm sort of curious if um, I'm I'm not quite sure.
And I'm sorry, Aqui, this has absolutely nothing to do with you at all. I'm so sorry.
No, don't, there's no
Not even a little bit. I'm so sorry.
There's nothing to apologize for. No, that's okay. Um, so five oh four, the primary changes in five oh four were really around um changes in title and in language to just bring it up to date to what our our current language is. So you will see, for instance, on pages eighty-six and eighty-seven, administrator in charge changed to executive director. So um those sorts of changes there in that particular policy. Is that one that in your review prior to tonight, you discovered some suggested changes or questions that I would need to take five oh four point three back to the policy committee? Okay, um five oh six point five, law enforcement and student contact. In your review prior to the meeting tonight, um were there any changes or questions that you had that would indicate I should take that particular policy back to the committee? Okay, and then five oh six point five one, reviewing the agenda prior to tonight, were there any questions in that particular policy that would indicate I should take this one back to the committee?
Which one, I'm sorry?
Five oh six point five one
Oh, that's right, okay.
On page eighty-nine. And then prior to uh this evening, based on your review of five oh six point six, student fines, fees, and charges, is there anything that would indicate that that policy should go back to the committee? Okay, and then seven oh six point three, student transportation. Was there anything based on your review of that one that would indicate I should take that back to the policy review committee? And then um seven oh six point four, student conduct on school transportation. Is there anything in your review of that one that would indicate I should take it back to the policy review committee? And then finally, seven oh six point seven, video camera supervision and viewing. Is there anything in that policy based on your review prior to tonight that would indicate I should take it back to the policy review committee? Okay, so I have in my notes that one oh nine point zero and two eleven point zero will be going back to the policy review committee. Wonderful, okay, thank you so much.
And then the rest would move on to a second reading for the next time, and I think those are, and remember, I just remind the board, these are your policies, so at any point in time, if there's something, you say, you know, you're reading a policy one day in all your spare time, and you say, you know, I really think that this one needs to be looked at, you can, your your direction is just to give that back to me, and then we will take a look at it and bring it back, and we can we can bring it through the processes again. These are your policies, your governing governing laws, and so um just let us know, and we'll we'll move those, the others forward to second reading, and we'll take the others back.
I had no idea how to do that, none. It was presented to me during the policy
Seven oh six point seven as well, Aqui.
The only time that we could um discuss policy is if it was brought by
Okay.
Um, it was brought by the the whoever it was under. It, that's how it was presented, that we we are not able to bring anything forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, for the confusion, um so some of the policies will come back for a second reading, and some will be reviewed by the policy review committee when the next meeting of that is set. So we will move on to exhibit P in your board packet, and that is the River Hills Schools Consortium, the SBRC application for special education administrative costs. We have Michael Coughlin, the CFO, who will be um available for questions. And I'm going to read the superintendent's recommendation. The board approved the application to the School Budget Review Committee, SBRC, in the amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-eight cents for special education administrative costs associated with River Hills Consortium program for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Sumud.
Thank you. Thank you, India. Discussion, Michael.
Just to give a clarification on what this is standing for is special education has strict rules of what can be charged to special ed. And one of the things that cannot be charged to special ed ed is administrative costs, unless it's a special situation. So if we have special education programs within the district that are housed here, we cannot charge like the special ed director to special ed funding, just teachers and paras. Secretaries do not qualify, so we have to, we have to pay that from the district funds because all of special ed kids are regular kids first, and that's what we're supposed to use that money for. However, when we have a new or have a special However, when we have a new, or have a special situation like River Hills, where there are multiple districts and they have to, on a different site, and they have to hire a new administrator, then we have the ability, the SBRC has the ability to approve all of these schools to pay their share of the administrative costs out of special ed funding. And that's what this action is approving of just saying, we partner with all of these schools for this request to the SBRC to allow each of these districts to charge their corresponding amount to special ed funds.
Can I ask how many administrators this covers? Do you know how many there are at River Hills?
I don't know. Jane, do you know who's that?
Oh. I believe there's just one main administrator. And so I believe Stephanie, is it just one, Dr. Mohorn? Yeah, I believe it's just one.
Well, on the top here, it says River Hills FY Administrator, sour.
I think it's just one. Stacy, because at River Hills, I would say that we have about half of the students there. So I believe that's, I think that's pretty indicative by the prorated proportionate.
No, I mean, I was looking at how much...
By the list, we have twenty-four kids out of eighty-four.
Oh, okay. See, that's gone down then. Okay, so, okay.
I was just, I was just looking at the total and wondering if that was just one person, if there was more than one.
I was wondering my question, what are numbers that, so are numbers have gone down there?
They they have, because I can just remember from years back, I think when I was sitting in Dr. Mohorn's seat, I think it was, you know, forty, maybe even fifty at one time. So it sounds like they've gone down.
In-house here with services.
But now that we're offering more of a spectrum of programming in our home buildings, that would be why the numbers have gone down.
No, it's good.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay. All in favor of approving, state aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carried, six, zero. Okay, now we're moving to exhibit Q in our board packet, which is on page ninety-eight. And this is the Lead Center Administrative Cost Summary. And again, this will be questions addressed by Michael Coughlin. And the superintendent's recommendation is that the board approve the application to the SBRC School Budget Review Committee in the amount of eleven thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-two cents for special education administrative costs associated with the Lead Center Consortium program for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Submove. Thank you. Thank you. And discussion, Michael?
It's the same explanation for the Lead Center as it was for River Hills of being able to charge the, I gotta find the right line, eleven thousand seven thirty-two, thirty-two out of special ed funds.
Can you just explain the difference of the two? Like, why would one student go, one, it's one center versus another center?
I can tell you that the Lead Center is more for behavior support for students, where River Hills traditionally has been more for our, like, extended core needs, cognitive needs for for our kids, so.
Where does transportation, where do these students come in at? Are they just general transportation costs that we get for these students going there?
For the transportation costs for these?
Right, I'm going to, obviously, I'm going to Briner County here. So we're paying for that as soon, right, with special, with special ed?
I don't know if it's a hard and fast rule of depending on what student it is. The majority of it, when we pay the River Hills bill, we have to, we pay for the transportation that that student requires. I don't understand the crossing of districts, or that would really be a special ed question.
Is that, are they coming to get the kids, or are we taking them there? I guess that's my...
Yeah, we transport, yeah.
So is our, our staff is transporting too, so?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions for Stephanie or Michael? All right, all those in favor of approving this motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carried, six, zero. We will move on to exhibit R in our board packet. It's the limited English proficient allowable costs in excess of revenues, LEP allowable cost application. The superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approves submission of the request to the SBRC for six hundred and twenty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and six cents in modified allowable growth to provide one hundred percent spending authority for twenty-twenty-one actual LEP program costs. And this increased allowable growth may be funded by twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three cash reserve levies.
Submove.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, again, Michael.
There's a couple of components that come into this decision, and one of them is understanding the issue with, I'll refer to ELL as second language students. We get revenue based on waiting. We get revenue based on new kids that are counted in, when new kids that we get authority for, when they come in the next year. And we count the year before and get waiting for it. When they show up at the door this year, we apply for allowable growth, and that's one of the next exhibits. So we have available revenue to fund ELL. If we go over that funding, then that excess can be passed on to the taxpayer. It can be. That's a choice by the board. That's why it says at the end of the motion, it may be added to cash reserve to fund that. But we do get the authority for it, which means, and we'll get into that more as we deal with budget going forward. But one of the things I just wanted to bring up, that if you remember what we've been through this in the last couple of years, there has, there was an acceleration of ELL programming a couple of years ago. And our excess was, two years ago, was one point six million over what we got in revenue. Last year, when you addressed this, it was one point eight million. Now, this year, looking at those opportunities of how to fund ELL, ESER comes into that picture. Because that is one of the four categories that the ESER guidelines address. One is minority students, one is disa- students with disabilities, one is students with a psychic language. And I can't remember what the fourth one is right now. But that's one of the main areas to address that ESER was supposed to, supposed to enhance learning loss recovery and helping them go on in the future. So in that, there was ESER money that was committed to this. The expenses of the program between last year and this year went down just under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we're spending almost the same amount of money between nineteen twenty and twenty-twenty-one. So the expenditures didn't go down a lot, but they did go down two hundred and fifty thousand. At the same time, the revenue went up a hundred and forty-four thousand. So both of those together will decrease that overage of the one point eight by both of those numbers added together. And then when you put ESER on top of that, we committed around eight hundred thousand to this to bring, to specifically bring the overage down to a lower amount because that money just got passed on to the taxpayer. And the ESER money was capable of covering it. It is something we have to look at every year to say, is this how we're going to use that? So that's, so we went from one point eight million a year ago. The revenues went up, the expenditures went down, and then we added ESER money to it, and that's how we got to six hundred thousand. But the program itself didn't change a lot. It was just how we funded it.
Did the need change at all? Like, you said the revenue went up, but did the need of the students' families change in the midst of all that?
I'm not sure what you're, like, and the need, what needs are you...
The needs of the students, I guess, yeah, the funding, so, of, we're funding students at this point. But did the need increase in the twenty-twenty?
Is the question, did we have more students?
Yes.
Oh, more numbers, okay, that was just me. I just was trying to, no, no, no.
Head count, yeah, did it, did it increase, so, thank you.
I'm trying to remember overall if we had additional, as far as head count for ELL. I do think we've, I don't know if we've gone up a lot, but we do have more students, I believe, in our newcomer program, which is di- which is different because, of course, they have a higher need if they're, if they're considered a newcomer than if they have been here, you know, three years, two years even, for different things. Does that...
What's that, just those five years or is...
The extra waiting comes when you have to go beyond five years. That if we have students come in that still need, and I'm just going by the regulations of the funding, that if we have students that still need ELL...
Services.
Past five years.
Past five years.
More after five years, because I don't think we're, five years isn't what we're probably seeing these kids in the program, right?
Past five years?
Yeah, we're probably still seeing a lot.
We are. We, oh, I don't have, yep, yes, we are.
Michael, follow Jesse. Yep, got it. Sorry.
He's a big red sign. Any further questions for Michael or Stephanie?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So all in favor of approving the modified allowable growth for twenty-two, twenty-three cash reserve levies? Please vote aye.
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 Those opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carried, six, zero. Now we will move on to exhibit S on page one hundred and three in our packet. And again, Michael will be our contact on this. And we do have three separate motions that we have to vote on individually. So the first recommendation from the superintendent is to accept increased enrollment. The district's administration has authorized to submit a request to the School Budget Review Committee, SBRC, for a modified supplemental amount of three hundred and eighty-five thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars due to an increase of certified enrollment from the prior year.
Submove.
Second.
Thank you, Jesse and India. Discussion.
Okay, so this is part of a three-point package when we do enrollment. And I talked about how when we do enrollment in the fall, it counts for the following year, not the year that you take. But what happens under reality is that you have a count. So this school year for twenty-one, twenty-two, we're funded off of the count October in twenty. Well, by the time school starts in September, things change. More kids come that we have to educate. So we don't get any cash, but we get authority in our formula to say, we'll give you the ability to spend the money that you need on those students. So what this is funding is as you look at the bottom of that first paragraph under number one, our enrollment went up fifty-three kids this year. So we get to apply our cost per pupil from the state, seventy-two, twenty-seven, and we get three hundred and eighty-five thousand plus of additional authority to be able to educate those students. What it then allows us to do in the following budget, if we want to, add it to cash reserve and collect actual dollars for that through the property tax system. So that's what, number one, it's about, just regular kids, that the co- the amount of kids that come in on the count, or come in after the year before count, and then we actually have more kids come, we can apply for authority to cover the education of those students.
Everybody? Thank you, Michael. That was a good explanation. All in favor of approving the increased enrollment, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. The second superintendent recommendation is open enrollment out not on prior year's head count. The district's administration has authorized to submit, oh, sorry, submit a request to the school board, School Budget Review Committee for a modified supplemental amount of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars for open enrolled out students who were not included in the district's previous year's certified enrollment count.
Submove.
Thank you. Thank you. Michael?
If you can remember all these and keep them straight. This, this is kind of a complicated, because they all work together. One and two work together because it is saying for, we're talking about open enroll out. So what I said in the audit presentation was, we have to send the money that we get to the receiving district. But what if those kids weren't here last year when we counted? They're not generating any money. So if we've got new kids in the district that want to open and roll out, we have no revenue authority to pay those bills. So what this action is saying is you weren't on the count last year. But they're in your district this year, and they're open enrolling out to another district. So to give you the authority, budget authority, to be able to pay that bill, you can get additional authority in your formula to be able to pay those open and roll out bills. Now, the other caveat to this, that when you look up above, it said that we had fifty-three new kids. So in the open enrollment formula, if you have new open enroll kids that don't, weren't on last year's count, and in our case, it was a hundred and thirty-two point four. But we had fifty-three, we got, we got authority for fifty-three regular kids. So you have to take the difference of that. They don't give you new enrollment plus new open enrollment enrollment. So that's where the difference comes in. And so the difference between those two numbers is seventy-nine point one. And then open enrollment is always the prior year cost per pupil. So that one is seven thousand forty-eight rather than seven thousand two twenty-seven because it was based on if they would have been on last year's count. And that was the cost per pupil for last year.
So we could have seen the increase here with open enrollment rules, with kids that were in private schools now open rolling out to neighboring districts.
Anybody that qualifies for that, if they weren't on the previous year open enrollment, we can get the authority for it. But we have to work through our budget system to get the cash to back it up.
Assuming it's a bigger increase than normal this year, just...
Yeah. Yeah, this is by far the the largest increase in open enrollment in many years.
Okay, are we good? Aster and Stacy, good? You are good. All right. All in favor, then? That was a great explanation, Michael. Thank you. You're getting it into more layman's terms, which is good. Open enrollment out not on prior year's head count, all in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carried, six, zero. Now, the third recommendation is, the superintendent's recommendation is that limited English proficient LEP instruction beyond five years. The district's administration is authorized to submit a request to the SBRC for a modified supplemental amount of four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars related to the English Language Learning Program for students who have exceeded five years of waiting that are included on the Fall twenty-twenty-one Certified Enrollment Head Count.
Some move.
Second.
Okay, so this is the result of a new law applied to ELL students passed by the legislature last year. It kind of follows the same game plan of new kids coming to the district that weren't counted last year, like the enrollment or the open enrollment kids that weren't on the count. So, if we have ELL kids that come in and need services past five years, and they weren't on our count last year, we can add that authority to the current year so we can educate them and not just be out the money we have to spend to educate them. But as you see below that, there's an intermediate level and an intensive level, because there has been talk to the legislature for years saying, the waiting that we've been getting for ELL kids, which is two point two-two. So, a fifth of a total cost was the waiting for ELL, where you look at special ed level one is point seven-two, and level two is one point three-five, and level three is two point six-eight. So, it went in accordance with their severity. So, that's what schools were trying to get through on ELL, because there are all different kinds of need for kids coming into the district. So, they passed the discretionary, I, I'm not coming up with the right word, but they put them into categories. Instead of everybody being point two-two waiting, they said, if you're intensive, you get point two-six. But if you're intermediate, we're dropping you to point two-one. So, in reality, we ended up with less ELL money than we did originally. So, the explanation I heard through, um, progression of this is, and I'm going off of Larry and Margaret interpreting this, of saying, okay, we're glad that they differentiated the two levels. Now, we'll work on the waitings. It was kind of step one, step two. So, they're not giving up that we're stuck on this, that it's just, we got that concept approved in the legislator's mind. So, we had, by the time you add, we had two, two hundred and seventy-nine students that were new to the district that needed past year five services, and when you coordinate that to the waiting, instead of two hundred and seventy-nine kids, it's, it works down to fifty-nine kids with the waiting. So, then we got fifty-nine kids times a seven thousand two twenty-seven, 'cause it's current year, and that's also an, uh, an, a budget authority figure that the SBRC would approve to say, you have new kids and you need to educate them. So, even though there's two categories, we'll work through all of that under the new laws, but this is the amount of authority that would be awarded by the SBRC for this number of new kids in ELL.
Uh, Dr. Mohorn, so, are the kids already placed in which, in an intermediate or intensive before they come to us? Or is that something that we test for when?
That's what we test for right away, um, when they, when they enroll, yep. That's one of the first things that we do.
I'm kind of hot, Colton, 'cause I don't, I don't like a single line being a point, because if you're, you know, if you're on this side of the line, you're gonna get this, but you know what? If you're, this area gray, I mean, it's, it's not, you know, it's like, you know, it's like, it should be almost like, to me, I like a band, that you, you're in this band, you're, you may, may fall to a different direction, 'cause I mean, here's barely underneath the line, and you're with waiting, yours has been just about, almost resources that, somebody found just the other side, and that, and who's setting the line? I mean, I assume it's the state standard, but.
It is, it is, and that's who sets the line, so that's, that's kind of the hard, that's where we have to balance carefully, of course.
Yeah.
And what was the purpose initially for setting the line?
The, what's the purpose for the state setting the line? I think, my opinion, and Jane, you can correct me, is because we have to have a, a bar for everything somewhere, somewhere to start, and do we need to review it? Of course, you know, different years, but I think we have to have a, some way to even start.
Well, I guess it, it's positive they're discussing it, though, in our legislature, and, you know, realizing that the funding needs to be available in, I guess, this.
I, I support the, you know, increase, you know, everyone, especially intensive, but, you know, I look at it and say, so, on all of that, we ended up with twelve, only twelve kids in the intensive category, seems like that maybe, uh, that line was kind of put, maybe skewed too far one way or another, 'cause it just seemed to me that, you know, with our amount of new students that we got more that are probably in that category.
And the, the students fluctuate, too. I mean, that changes from October to February, and who comes and goes, and that's, you know, that's something that we really try to keep our pulse on as well, the, the comings and the goings.
The other thing it doesn't account for either, I think, in the waiting here, is that it just assumes that, you know, we have many languages that you're teaching versus one or two. There's a lot more costs when you have a more highly diverse language, you know, profile versus me, a community that made or that we're working with. One or two, where we're working with, what, um, over forty-plus, right?
Absolutely, and when I started in our district twenty years ago, we had two, maybe three languages. That is so far, I mean, so far from the case now.
Yeah, the cost for doing that many languages, you know, you duplicate a lot of services, so.
But it's also a celebration, I want us to remember, too, that is, you know, having that many is also, you know, it's also a, a celebration as well.
So, just in perspective of the changes, as you are talking about, is, um, that it was just an automatic decision by the board to say, we want that authority granted to us, and if you approve this, they will grant it, because it's a local decision. And then, it's a local decision if you want to put it toward property taxes. So, that's why they kind of gave that up, of saying, it's not our decision to make of how we're gonna do that, um.
No, but waiting is, though.
Yeah.
I would say waiting.
Yeah.
To me, it should maybe include a factor of how many languages you are working with into that factor, as opposed to just how many kids, because obviously, a district with a higher number of languages, it's gonna have a higher cost of services than a district that's only working with one or two or three languages.
Well, what I was going to say with that, before this last five years, there was only six to eight districts in the whole state that overspent their ELL money. And you can about imagine Davenport and Des Moines and Postville and, you know. And, but, yes, they have all grown and grown, but this isn't a comprehensive state issue. It's for the few that have these multiple, multiple languages. Um, so, it is kind of a private battle. But, so I think that's why, uh, Larry and Margaret are talking about one step at a time. So, that's kind of where we're at, but.
You know, that said, you know, we should be advocating for them also, maybe look at that number of languages or something factoring in to help, you know, those, those who are.
Those would be good things to approach your legislatures about, just say, you know, the differences of the communities, definitely. So, that's something we could advocate for, all of us, so.
Because it's important to us to make sure that we serve all of our kids, even if we have one student who speaks a, a language, you know, that's, that's our job to support them.
Oh, yeah.
And it's tough sometimes, but we still, yep, absolutely.
Yes.
Good discussion, some good ideas. Okay, all in favor of, um, approving the second superintendent's recommendation for the LEP instruction beyond five years, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carried, six, zero. Now, we are down two, we're getting to the end, I promise, we really are. Janelle's over there going, whoa, what did I do? I'm, I'm watching her eyes, so. On page one hundred and seven, and this is agenda item T that we are on. And this is the superintendent's recommendation that the Board of Education authorized the district's administration to submit a request to the SBRC in the amount of three million, eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars for modified supplemental amount for the purpose of funding district at-risk programming for twenty-two, twenty-three.
Some move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. Once again, Michael?
Um, another, a little bit complicated process we go through. There are two kinds of funding in this at-risk application. It's modified supplemental, um, assistance, the MSA. At-risk is in two parts. One part of it is based on our enrollment and, um, percentage of free and reduced kids within that enrollment. And there is a formula that dictates this amount for every district in the state. The estimated amount for that supplemental, uh, growth is five hundred and thirty-two thousand. That comes automatically. That part is, um, by formula, it's in the budget formula, it just automatically comes for every district, you don't need to take action. But because it's part of the whole MSA at-risk, um, application, that's why it has to be mentioned. So, the five hundred and thirty-two thousand is just an automatic, and that's an amount for twenty-two, twenty-three. We're again now talking another year out. But the other part, which is, when we take the enrollment times the cost per pupil, seven thousand two twenty-seven, times ten thousand eight hundred kids, we come up with a district cost, um, an amount, um, regular program district cost. And five percent of that, we can approve to go to at-risk funding, and the majority of that is expo. So, we have expo, we have PBDA, we have, um, family support workers. So, you, you just think of high-risk kids being served, that's what that is. So, that you have the five percent of the three point eight million, but then, we have to match that with another twenty-five percent of that number, so when you add that together, it's like five million gets to go to at-risk funding. That's also a local decision, because the three point eight million of this is all property tax. Most of our budget is a share of property tax and state aid. It's basically a sixty-forty deal. This is a hundred percent property tax, that's why it's a local decision. And not every district has the need for at-risk funding like we do. So, that's why they give it up to local control of saying, it's a board action to say, we want to apply for this and use it. It's specifically targeted, that can be only used for at-risk programs. And again, expo is the, the biggest chunk of that. So, um, below the explanation that, on there, just giving you an idea of how we have used that money in the past, those are not hard numbers, some of those programs may not even exist anymore, or they've been evolved into something else. We approve that funding now, and we don't make that decision until next summer, because it goes for twenty-two, twenty-three, and just, and to commit to the budget for those programs now would be pretty premature. So, that's why the, the SBRC says you can just approve the amount, you don't have to tell us what you're gonna use it for, you decide that later. But you know what you're using it for in the umbrella of at-risk programs. And those are just, uh, a listing of kind of how we've used it in the past.
Got it.
And every year, it fluctuates a little bit, um, but that's some of the main things.
So, if it's summer school, we would have probably spent ESSER money more on this.
Yeah. And we have other grants that do summer school, too, so it's a, uh, it's a decision process.
But we have the authority, if we want to.
Yeah, look at Stephanie, and she's nodding her head, yeah, of trying to figure out where all the pieces go to use everything to the best advantage.
And we've had IJAG in here presenting, you know, fairly recently, too, so.
And some of those, we have switched to ESSER, you know, to say, we can expand it, um, and use ESSER money for.
And the SRO officers.
I was gonna ask.
Too, mhm.
Yeah.
Any more questions, discussion? India, you go, India? Okay. All in favor of approving the superintendent's recommendation for the MSA at-risk programming for twenty-two, twenty-three, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carried, six, zero. We are now finished with our action items on the agenda. The information only is, again, our most famous presenter tonight, Mr. Michael Coughlin. And this is, um, the, um, cash flow charts that he always, um, presents us with. So, you've got the floor once again, Michael.
Yep, I'm still in process of converting the new year, 'cause we really can't start the Forecast Five process until the audit's done, to have hard numbers in the CAR, so that's in process of being updated. But I can show you the evidence of where we're sitting, uh, in our current spending patterns. So, as I look at them in my colorblindness, uh, the orange is last year. That's the actual cash flow of all the different accounts. And then, the blue is where we're at this year, and you can see we're about ten million dollars ahead in the general fund. So, that shows where we're at. The management fund is, uh, property insurance and workers' comp. The sales tax is the Lowell project, all the buildings we've done, the major construction, and because last year was high because we borrowed to start Lowell, so, and then, that's working its way down. Uh, and the blue that's there, uh, is showing over twenty million, but seventeen million of it is still available for new things. The remainder is what's left to pay on Lowell. And I'll just address the PEPAL fund, which we're going to talk about this week, that that budget is a little higher than last year because, um, of the Lowell project, some of the other things kind of got put on hold. So, that, uh, fund is, uh, healthy to this point, all, if all the revenue for this year is added, uh, for this year, it'll be up around six million. But then, that add is available to plan for projects for this year, next summer, and going forward. So, that's where we're at.
Perfect. Any questions for Michael on the charts or where we're at financially, after our great audit? All right, now, we will move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Lindeman?
All right, in the interest of time, this is the, Janelle, don't let this scare you, they usually are not this long, but we had a lot to accomplish today, so. First, I guess, I just, Janelle, I wanted to just give you a warm wel- welcome, um, and really, I wanted to also. Um, and really, I wanted to also join in with, um, India and Aster. You know, it's, you heard Shanley talk about what, how much time and how many meetings and all of those things, um, happening. And Janelle, you don't know what, yet what you're getting into, but India and Aster, you know, they know and they, they signed up for it again. And so I'm just really grateful for all three of you, you know, putting your name on the ballot and your willingness to run. And, um, this has just, you know, historically been, it's been a good board. And I've, you know, I've been here eight years and I've just been blessed by all of the people that are sitting around the table who really do care about kids. So thank you and welcome. And, um, it takes a little while to get acclimated, I think everybody can tell you. But you have six really great numbers, um, board members and a great board secretary, and I'm always willing to help, too. So we'll get you up to speed as quickly and it, part of it just comes with time. So welcome aboard and, um, India and Aster, congratulations and thank you so much for your willingness to run. I, I'm going to just maybe pick one more thing. I wanted to talk just really quickly about Lowell Elementary, um, real quick, um, update. So we are nearing, um, nearing the date where we're going to bring our babies home. So we have had, if you remember back to February twentieth, uh, February twentieth of, um, twenty-nineteen, February twentieth of twenty-nineteen. So we are, you know, really, really close to three years ago. Um, we had the tragedy of the, the roof falling down and, um, no one was hurt. And sometimes when we go back and look at pictures, I'm always just so grateful that no one was hurt. And so, uh, we are really close. So what, what's happening is that we will be moving, um, I believe we are really close to getting occupancy, maybe at Friday is the date. So, um, that means that we will be ready to start moving some things in over, and, and it might be Saturday. Don't quote me, it's Friday or Saturday, it's really, really close. And so, um, I know that our custodial staff, a special shout-out to them, they are going to work all weekend to make sure that they move an entire building from the temporary Lowell back into, um, the new. And of course, there's new furniture waiting for them, and so they won't need to move those kind of things. We'll get those later, but right now they're moving lots of boxes. And so, um, you know, just so much gratitude toward the, the Lowell families, the Lowell students, the Lowell staff who have had to endure and persevere. And, um, so they'll be, they'll be moving in next week. And so if the public, we're not really going to let people in just yet. We need our, our staff to have some time to just get acclimated. So if you drive by, you will see Busy Beavers on Monday and Tuesday, they will be, um, the lights will be on and, um, the door is almost open welcoming the students. So students will start back on January third, and, um, we will all be there, ready to, to welcome them. That's, it's, it's a very big day. Um, if you drive by the building, it's absolutely gorgeous. And, um, I'm going to run up there tomorrow and take another peek, and it's, it's absolutely beautiful. So looking forward to that. And, um, we're going to make sure that we do, um, Aqui's been working with the team and they've got some really great promotional, um, videos and things that we'll be putting out so people can kind of see a, um, and we do have a, we have a open house that very first week. But it's, this particular open house is just for families and students. So we're going to let the students show their parents around and then we'll do a more formal open house later. So good things ahead. Pardon me? Yes, I think the, I think that, um, Aqui, I'm going to look, I believe we have a lot of news requests for that first day. And so people will be around and, and it's just a, it's a, it's a really great thing. So we'll be taking, I think, actually, I saw on my calendar, I've got some, um, a slot for, um, media interviews on Thursday even already. So I think people are, they're getting ready, they're getting ready.
And for the general public, the, could you just say where the kids are going to be dropped off and where the buses go? Because I've had a couple of people just mention, are they going to be dropped off, off of Washington, so.
Yeah, the, the, um, if people drive down, um, oh, for goodness sakes, Williston, thank you. Um, they drive down Williston, there is, you know, it'll be really clearly marked. And actually, there's quite a bit of signage up already that, um, if you're dropping off your parent, if you're dropping off your students, you will pull in that first part and then you'll circle around and exit. There's a nice, long approach that, um, families can use. And then buses will be off of Washington, so not the families, but the buses will pull in and, and there's a bus lane there for, for our buses. So, um, it'll be marked now, the, we have a lot of things, matter of fact, we have a meeting this, we've been meeting every other week, um, early to make sure that we're, we're talking about this. But we have a lot of things that we'll be getting out to families yet. The bus routes, I believe, maybe just went out for those who are eligible for busing going forward. Um, there's some notes going out from their principal to talk about what those opening days will look like and, um, with some maps on how to drop off. And they'll, they'll be, there's a lot of staff. I think many of us are going to be up there, standing outside, helping our littlest ones, so be good.
Awesome, it'll be exciting. It is, it's awesome. And now we'll start with Stacy tonight.
Um, first I wanted to congratulate our candidates and, uh, who are elected and to welcome Janelle. It's a, it's a steep learning curve, but it's worth it. And, and I know you're going to, you're going to kill it. I wanted to thank, um, the district for allowing us to go to the, um, the conference. The Iowa School, Association of, Association of School Board Conference. It was November seventeenth, something like that. Um, I learned all kinds of cool stuff, things I brought home, things I'm trying to utilize. Um, so it was very much worth it. I appreciate having that opportunity. Um, and then I just had one question, um, kind of Kingsley. We've kind of, I'm, I'm channeling my, my inner Lyle here. So we've kind of brought up before, is there any more discussion about using Esser funds to give teachers a bonus? Or staff, I'm sorry, a bonus?
Yeah, we're working on that. Actually, that's why I stepped out and talked to Jody Baller, our WA president. We're going to reach out to our union groups and have a pretty, um, in-depth conversation over the next week about some different options. Um, I, I don't want to spoil, um, or share, um, you know, some of the pieces. But, um, we'll send something to you in the board update. But we're working on a couple of different things. I mean, it's no surprise, but dur- not during this meeting, but sometime there is a, a W, or referral bonus that just went out for our WSP employees. Um, and so you'll see something more information about that here shortly. Um, but it's specifically for WSP individuals and then extends to for the rest of the staff, um, after January thirty-first, thirty days, I'm still, maybe, January thirty-first. So, um, there's more stuff that we're doing. But it's just taking some time and we'll make sure that information gets to you here in the next board update.
Thank you very much.
Aster?
I'm up. Um, I just wanted to welcome Janelle as well and congratulate, uh, Sue and India on their positions. Sue, you got big shoes to fill. But I know you're. Yeah, yeah. But I know you'll do well, both of you, I know you'll do well. Jessie, we'll be thinking about you, buddy, praying for you and, and we know all will go well, so. Glad, glad you were able to join us today.
All he wants for Christmas is a new back.
Right. I've been there, so I, I, I know how you're feeling, so, yeah, so that's all I have.
Thank you. India, we'll go you next, India.
Again, I'll say, welcome. Yes, it's a steep curve, but it's definitely worth it. And, uh, you get, you'll go by so fast and you're like, what just happened? So, um, congratulations, Sue. Mr. Williams, congratulations. Just want to say happy holidays to everyone. Uh, just enjoy your time off, teachers and staff members and, um, just enjoy your time because it's coming up fast. So it'll be gone fast, too, so, thanks.
So, yeah, welcome to, uh, our new board members as well. Nice to have you on the side of me. And, um, congratulations on another member getting elected. And, and, uh, we'll miss, definitely miss Shanley, but she definitely gave the community a lot of time here, the board. So, um, with that, um, after a year absence, big return, the Battle of Waterloo is coming up this weekend. For any wrestling fans out there, it's our, our Waterloo hosted event at Young Arena. Thirty-two teams, they will compete over two days. So if you want to watch some wrestling, please come out, uh, support. And probably still looking for some volunteers here and there to help with the event going on, too, so.
And Janelle, this is at the end of the meetings, we each get a time to, um, state your thoughts or whatever you want. So you're up.
Thank you so much to everybody who has given me so much help already on the steep learning curve, and I can't wait to serve. And I really, really believe in Waterloo and I really believe in students and I really believe in all the students and the teachers and the administrators and the staff and everything. Having an education background, I want to learn everything that I can learn and serve in any way that I can serve. So I'm really excited to do that and, um, really glad to be, uh, a part of an organization that is helping kids again. Um, and thank you so much to all. And, um, congratulations to Aster and to Sue and to India doubly. And, uh, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. So I guess I get to be the last say and everyone's already said, like Shanley said. But, um, I do want to say that this is our only board meeting this month, obviously with the holiday. And then our next board meeting will be January tenth of twenty-twenty-two at five o'clock in the same room. And just wanted to say that, um, enjoy the holiday, thank everyone for their service. And, um, just, um, as we start the new year, um, just look at it as a new adventure and new opportunity. So you could get out and enjoy a great basketball game. We have west and east and, um, we have both excellent girl and boys teams and plus wrestling, all the winter sports. So just get out and support Waterloo. So with that in mind, um, would anyone like to close the meeting with a motion?
I move.
Second. Thank you. Happy holidays.